Ryan, you ready? Okay, I'll call to meet an order, uh, roll please.
Here.
Here.
Present.
This is McKnight.
Here.
This is Belisca.
Present.
Let's move the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we all remain standing for a minute? I think it's appropriate that we have a moment of silence. After nine eleven, we had six individuals in our town that passed away that day. And I just want to say, you know, I was mayor back then and I know the police, fire, rescue. What they did was, they went above and beyond that day and for the weeks after that. So we can have a moment of silence and thank them and think about the people who passed. It's a public hearing. This is a public meeting, uh, through New Providence, uh, council meeting. County of Union, state of Jersey, annual notice has been given in accordance with P L nineteen seventy-five. Chapter two thirty-one, annual notice of revision was made in accordance with section thirteen of the Act. First, we have a public hearing on ordinance eleven, please. Please read the title.
An ordinance mending and supplementing chapter two fifty-three of the code of the borough of New Providence entitled Vehicles Abandoned and Unlicensed.
What this is, is that, uh, previously, the building inspector used to give out the summons for that and now it has switched to the police department. Anybody wishing to address, uh, this ordinance and this ordinance only, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Court of motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
This is Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
This is McKnight?
Yes.
This is Belisca?
Aye.
Okay. We have two appointments. Resolution two thirty-two, please read the title.
Resolution appointing Stephen Drown to captain in the New Providence Police Department of the Borough of New Providence, State of New Jersey, County of Union.
Court of motion, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
This is Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
This is McKnight?
Yes.
This is Belisca?
Aye.
Okay, repeat after me. I'm Stephen Drown.
Hi, Stephen Drown.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority?
Under the authority.
Of the people?
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Of police captain?
Of police captain.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. No, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you, everyone. I'm very thankful for this job. I'm thankful, um, my family is supporting me. And I don't want to forget the people that helped me get to this position now. So, thank you, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Two thirty-three.
Resolution two thirty-three, please read the title.
Resolution appointing Donald Shtrenovic as lieutenant in the New Providence Police Department, Borough of New Providence, State of New Jersey, County of Union.
Court of motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Aye.
This is Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
This is McKnight?
Yes.
This is Belisca?
Aye.
I, Donald Shtrenovic.
I, Donald Shtrenovic.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey?
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
The authority of the people.
That will faithfully?
That will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of police lieutenant?
All the duties of police lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability. Six. Just want to thank everybody. Thank all those gentlemen back there for all the support all these years. The chief, the mayor, council, uh, this wonderful town. I really appreciate it. I loved being a part of this town.
We appreciate you.
Congratulations.
You know, you got some good guys when you see all the team members back there smiling and happy. Great job. Awesome.
It really is. Okay. Well, if everybody, they can leave now after we did the motions. But we do have one proclamation, so.
You can stay, though.
Nice. Too tired.
Alan, are you supposed to encourage people to stay? Are you supposed to encourage people to stay?
Food is hot and beer is cold, it's time to go. There goes your audience, honey.
Welcome to Trip Town.
Okay, this is a proclamation, September, as pediatric cancer awareness month. Whereas pediatric cancer is a leading cause of death by disease in children. And whereas the average age of diagnosis is six years old compared to sixty-six years for adult cancer diagnosis. And whereas two-thirds of pediatric cancer patients have chronic health conditions as a result of their treatment toxicity, with one quarter being classified as severe to life-threatening. And whereas approximately eighty-four percent of cancer families experience financial hardship. And whereas, in the last twenty years, only four new drugs have been approved by the F D A to specifically treat childhood cancer. And whereas the National Cancer Institute recognizes the unique research needs of pediatric cancer and the associated need for increased funding to find a cure. Whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including the Brookhealy Foundation, are helping children with cancer and in the scope through educational, emotional, and financial support. And whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer. And whereas, experts believe truly cure, believe, believe to truly cure cancer, that the focus on these cancers, that are the biggest bullies, like diffuse intrinsic quantity like coma. And whereas, whereas experts also believe that funding the cure for E I P G, I got that right? Could lead to a home run for cure of cancers. Whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease and more must be done to raise awareness to find a cure. Now therefore, I am Alan Morgan, Mayor of the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim, September, it's Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month in the Borough of New Providence, New Jersey, and encourage residents to observe Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month and support this cause that deeply impacts families in every community. And New Providence is truly special in this because it's the home of the Brookhealy Foundation, so.
It definitely hits home here for New Providence. They grew up in New Providence, I went to school here, raising my kids here. Someone just said before, it's a wonderful town. We really are very lucky and blessed to be where we are, very fortunate. The downside is watching our friends, neighbors, and families with children that are suffering from these incurable cancers. So we're going to care until it's cured. And we're going to keep going, raising the awareness and spreading, spreading this wherever we can go and just getting all the support that we can. So we appreciate everybody's time and support for all this.
And we appreciate you, everything you do, and your organization.
Working hard, they're helping a lot of families.
I know you want it.
And if you get time, go on to Brookhealy dot com. You can look and see what the events are. There is a Somerset Patriot game. Uh, there's going to be a Star Wars night this Friday night. They're going to donate proceeds to the Brookhealy Foundation. They're going to be auctioning off some character jerseys. Uh, we have all kinds of events. We have from every town, from the Sterling Hotel, the Prestige Diner, Old Glory, places in Summit, Berkeley Heights. They're all putting on the stickers and putting out the coasters with the Q R codes so that people just pick up their phone, snap on it, and it takes them right to the site where you can read about it, learn about it, and see what you can do and be a part of trying to help us get things here. So here is, are usable, trying to be environmentally friendly and responsible.
Oh, thank you.
That is a benefit for everybody that's left here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We have a few minutes for July nineteenth, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ball favor?
Yes, aye.
Now, so the, um, correspondence, state, uh, state of New Jersey, D E P, remedial action protected this biennial certification form for the groundwater at six hundred mountain. We get that twice a year. J C P and L, a public notice for verification petition. Union County Council, the sale of county land in Berkeley Heights. D E P again, soil remediation permit for five thirty-five mountain. And the next one is, uh, the classification for the well at the same address. Uh, Shellborne Spring L L C, planning board hearing for forty-one spring. And Janice Gavin, um, I know you spoke to her, uh, Bernadette, uh, about the parking, um, during snowstorms, a gale strike. As you know, the ordinance says you cannot park in the street because we can't allow a street. And, um, I know, uh, Bernadette reached out to the superintendent and said, there is enough parking for all the cars. But if you want to add certain parking spaces, it costs you twenty-five dollars a month. Okay? Uh, Spring Grove Properties, uh, Board of Adjustment Hearing at one forty-four Dale's. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go to council business, I am administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two, two thirty-four is a resolution approving the requisition for the Verden Company in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars for Veterans Park clock replacement. It's basically approving the replacement purchase of the clock in Veterans Park using capital money. And I know that this has been on several people's mind and they will be very excited to see this working more than twice, uh, twice a day. Resolution twenty twenty-two, um, dash two thirty-five is a resolution authorizing the application for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, Union County Local Arts Grant, L A P, for the Borough of New Providence. Basically, this is authorizing the borough to apply for the Union County Local Arts Grants for fiscal twenty-three in the amount of six thousand dollars to purchase display cases for student arts, student artwork in the municipal building. Um, we actually have student artwork in the Lincoln Room and this will be an amazing addition. Um, introduction to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Ordinance of the Borough of New Providence to establish a registry for business insurance certificates. Governor Murphy signed into law, to law, S thirteen sixty-eight, requiring all business owners and owners of multifamily rental units to maintain certain levels of liability insurance. Um, in addition, this new law requires that all business owners and owners of multifamily rental units annually register a certificate of insurance with the municipality where the business or rental unit is located. So that's that. And then the next one is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, which is an ordinance of the Borough of New Providence to amend the borough code to add a new chapter, one sixty-six, titled Lead Paint Testing. And, um, this imposes an obligation of, on municipalities to perform or hire a certified lead evaluation contractor to perform inspections of certain single-family, two-family, and multi-rental dwellings for lead-based paint hazards every three years or upon tenant turnover.
Okay. Um, my community activities.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-six is a salary resolution. Uh, this is just a side resolution to hire some, um, part-time help, seasonal help for our community activities department, uh, a couple of youth programs and an adult program. An actual pickleball instructor, which sounds cool. That's an upcoming game.
Sport.
Uh, finance?
Go ahead. You're on a roll, so.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-seven is a resolution certifying our annual audit. Received our annual audit from Weigowitz and Company. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-eight is a resolution approving the corrective action plan required as part of our annual audit. So we did receive a few deficiencies in our audits, which normally come up. And, uh, I believe we have our CFO here today to talk through our action plan. Are we going to do that now? Can we do that now?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello, Jim.
So, um, just to start out, uh, Bernadette and I did meet with the auditor. We reviewed the whole audit document and, um, the recommendations, uh, that we're going to talk about in a little bit. I will say overall that the recommendations that were in the audit, in my opinion, were minor. And, um, we're going to address them and actually, we already started addressing some of them as we speak now. Um, do you want to talk about the audit overall in terms of my, my view of it?
Sure.
Or you want to just say what you have to address? Um, I think the documents, the audit documents, great. Gives you a good picture of the prior year. Uh, I will say that the financial position of the borough is in very good shape. Uh, your utilization and generation of surplus and appropriation of surplus is a good way of knowing about budget. Your use of the reserve accounts with regards on perceived circumstances with regards to the snow removal, uh, some of the, uh, the tax appeals, uh, is a good way of doing business. And, um, totally on board with using reserve accounts. And, um, the last piece I'd like to speak to is if you look at the audit document, it's a very big document, but if you look at the eight-two and the eight-three, it's like, I'll page eight-nine, gives you a good, good view of what happened during the year. Talks about your revenues, uh, cash basis received, and also talks about all your appropriations in terms of where are leftover appropriations and reserves that are carried over to twenty-two. If they're not used, they go to surplus. So, um, with regards to you, I just wanted to touch on that. Um, with regards to the CAP, which is the Corrective Action Plan, um, there were five different recommendations. Uh, the first one talks about the political contribution forms, which you are supposed to receive for any, um, contract over seventeen thousand, five hundred. Uh, when they did the audit, they found that there were a few vendors that we did not have them on file. A lot of them were, uh, multi-year, correct, multi-year, uh, contracts that we had them in one year but we didn't have in the twenty twenty-one year. So in talking with the Borough Clerk's Office and the Finance Office, we did put a method of implementation in that we're going to review it, uh, twice a year to make sure we have all those, uh, the, um, contribution forms on file. Uh, the second one was talking about utilization of state contracts and counter co-ops. And, uh, in talking with the auditor, uh, what I found was, it was not, um, purchases that were over those quote thresholds to begin with. It's more of an aggregate. So we had certain vendors that throughout the year that were under the threshold and then hit the bid threshold at a certain point during the year and fell through the cracks. So as the year went on, you're purchasing away, um, and nothing in the budget systems that even, I have not seen a budget system that would give you an alert that says, hey, you're over the bid threshold. You really need to now get the proper documentation. So, uh, what we're going to do with that, um, I talked to, um, Bernadette and the Finance Office and what we're going to do with regards to that recommendation, um, we're going to look at it. Considering a resolution in January, you have a blanket for the year, as well as during the year, looking at it, um, towards the end of the year to see if we have any of them that are over and we make sure we get the right resolutions in place before the end of the year. Also, I think with regards to the department heads, we'll let them know that they should keep an eye on any vendors that they're using, um, because they're the ones that use them and they, they're pretty familiar with them. And if they see that they're getting close, that they should really give us a heads up in the Finance and in the Administration Office so we can watch it. Uh, with regards to the third one, it's talking about payroll taxes of a third-party vendor. And, uh, what the auditors are looking for, and I don't remember back, but there was a company that was collecting all the money from, uh, districts, municipalities, and not sending it to the state. They were keeping all the money. What the auditors want from us is that proof from our third-party vendor on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis that they are submitting the taxes to the, uh, state. We are getting it now, right? And, uh, we will continue to do that, but it was just something in terms of what we should be doing in protocol with the auditors looking for that we do it on, uh, the payroll basis, which is a good thing to do, just to make sure that our taxes are being paid to the state. The fourth one, um, is with regards to enrolling, um, certain employees in the, um, pension fund. Anyone who, um, makes over five thousand dollars. And this really related to some part-time employees at the library that, um, they did hit that threshold based on what they were doing. That has been addressed already and they are enrolled, that's all speaking.
I thought that Christie passed a law years ago saying that if you're a part-time employee, you're not supposed to be in the pension system.
Well, no. It, it, you're a part-time employee, but it has to do with the dollar amount. If you're over a certain dollar amount, you can't be in the PERS regular fund, but they call it the defined pension plan. It's a hybrid of the actual PERS that is a contribution by the employee and the district. So it's almost like a 401K. It's not the actual pension fund.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a supplement fund, but anyone over five thousand dollars that works part-time. And when you say work part-time, it's consistently, it's not seasonal. Um, and they have to get into that defined benefit line. Um, it's actually not defined benefit plan, uh, it's actually, uh, almost like a 401K that, like I said, we both contribute into it. Uh, so it's not the defined benefit. And then the last, um, recommendation was that employees that contribute towards, uh, their health and dental contribute the correct amounts. And basically what was found with this is when, uh, when you switch from a state plan to a private plan or a private plan to a state plan, the contributions change with the dental. Um, so that portion of it, uh, we had to tie it up with our human resources department. We spoke to, to the department and going forward, it'll be reconciled and checked, um, for all the contributions. So that's all the recommendations. Like I said, to me, they're minor. Once the council approves the audit and the CAP, we'll do all the filing that we're supposed to, to the state. And then we'll follow through with the department heads in terms of letting all the departments know what the recommendations are and what are correct and incorrect. That's the main piece. When you put it on paper, you got to make sure that you go back to the departments to make sure that everyone's following what you put on paper so that they don't occur again.
Great, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
All right. So moving on, resolution twenty twenty-two dash two thirty-nine is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget pursuant of N J S forty A four dash eight seven, chapter one fifty-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight, community development block grants. Uh, this is inserting, uh, the C D E G grant money into our twenty twenty-two budget. We received five thousand dollars for the high-risk health fare and healthcare program for our senior citizens, as well as eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for our senior citizens' social services program, uh, as well as fifty thousand dollars for our Decorsa Center roof renovations. So some good grant money coming back to the, to the borough. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty is a resolution providing for the insertion of any special item of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget pursuant of N J S forty A four dash eight seven, chapter one fifty-nine, P L nineteen forty-eight, federal bulletproof vest program. This is inserting three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents into our twenty twenty-two budget for the purchase of a bulletproof vest. Is it one or more? It's one.
It's one.
At three thousand dollars, it's probably about three of them.
Three?
About a thousand dollars.
No. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-one is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of grant funds receivable and appropriated. And this is canceling our unused twenty twenty-one municipal alliance grants in the amount of eleven dollars and seventy-four cents, forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, and fifty-seven dollars. So that's great use of day alliance money there. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-two is a resolution accepting proposal from Suburban Consulting Engineers, Inc., ninety-six Highway two oh six, Suite one oh one, Flanders, New Jersey, for engineering and land surveying services provision of our tax maps. So what we're doing here is we are, uh, we received a proposal from Suburban Consulting Engineering to digitize our tax maps in the borough. These haven't been done, um, for many years. And, uh, so this is, uh, going to be, uh, borough-wide, we're preparing, in preparation for our borough-wide revaluation. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-three is a resolution authorizing payment of attached bills payable list in the amount of three million, three hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. Some significant items include our board of education payment for the month of September in the amount of one million, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. Some significant items include our Board of Education payment for the month of September in the amount of one million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand and twenty-five dollars. Our principal and interest debt payments to depositary trust of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. To the state of New Jersey for our August and September state health benefit premiums in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Our payment to top-line construction for Woodbine Road project paid out of our New Jersey Department of Transportation grant funds of a hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars to our USSI, which is our U.S. Sports and Summer Rec programs. They run our programs for us in, down in Oakwood. A hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. And to the library for our September payment of eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay, thank you. Might as well do legal and personnel, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-four is a resolution accepting or authorizing an easement agreement with respect to sixty-four Chestnut Street. There's some owners of that property who want to expand their driveway. We do have an easement for some utilities that go under their driveway, and this just authorizes them to expand their driveway with understanding that if we ever have to go in there and dig into that easement, they're responsible for all of the costs. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-five is a resolution amending, Resolution twenty twenty-two one forty-five, which appointed Dan Hen as the Police Chief for the Borough of New Providence. This just amends his salary to include a stipend for him being the OEM Coordinator, and I believe that was three thousand dollars per year. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-six is a resolution opposing the proposed increases to the state health benefits program. As you know, the, the state has proposed a twenty-one point six percent increase to the state health benefits program cost for municipal workers, and this resolution opposes that proposed increase. Yeah, it's a lot.
What does that affect, the twenty twenty-three?
This resolution will make it down there just in time, huh? I think all of the municipalities are going crazy over this. Okay, Matt, engineer.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two four seven, this is a resolution authorizing the return of cash performance guaranteed to Foley Square at Mary Hill, South Street, Southgate Road, and Westerly Avenue, block three three nine, lots four and five, block three three one, lot seven. This is return of cash portion of the liquidity bond in the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. An escrow money in the amount of five hundred and eight dollars and forty-two cents to Foley Square. Foley Square, as you know, has been built out and completed a while ago. There were some follow-up that our engineer, the construction officials had. They completed those follow-ups, and so we have received the cash portion of the bond. Here is an introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one four. This is an ordinance of the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter three ten of the Code of the Borough of New Providence entitled Zoning Ordinance. So, this is, so Chapter three ten is a codification and amendment provides, which provides standards for all of our development here in New Providence. The ordinance chapter is being updated to reflect what's now happening in the borough in regards to modernizing and becoming more user-friendly and keeping up with current trends. Included in this is our previously approved downtown ordinance. We worked on our downtown ordinance many years ago, which is designed to make it easier and provide guidance for people who want to come to downtown and enhance it. It also includes a new zone called the Central Commercial District Townhouse Zone. It includes a state mandated infrastructure ordinance, as well as a section in regard to green building sustainability and resiliency. That was also added to provide design and development guidelines for future development. And all of the sections within the, within the section three ten, so our, over the many years, it's kind of been added to and added to, and things have gotten a little bit out of order. Some ordinances have superseded other ordinances, so it's sort of putting it all together. Our planners have went through the entire chapter and streamlined it. Where there's, where there's redundancies, they've taken them out. Where there's conflicts, they've amended them, and that's what this, this is doing here.
Okay. We have a request to bid on protection in flashing beacons, which has been long awaited and can't wait to get them in. We have rapid requests, eleven seventy-one and eleven seventy-two for the host company number one, and eleven seventy-three for the bandwagon. Limousine license for Summit Express for Rajah Sakur. And Resolution two forty-eight, which authorized disposition of public sale of certain surplus supply, but not needed for public service. So, what that is, is that the police department has found thirty-two unclaimed bicycles and they've tried every attempt to find the owners to these bicycles, so they will go out for auction. Okay, public works.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please say.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two forty-nine is a resolution authorizing sale of property no longer needed for public use on an online auction website. And this is basically sort of purging the inventory, so to speak. We've got a list of vehicles ranging, you know, from nineteen eighty-nine ambulance to twenty twelve Ford. These vehicles are no longer being used. The dollars that are regenerated from the auction will go back into the budget, you know, this is a revenue item. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two fifty is a resolution approving partial payment number one for Aurora and Associates PC in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents for the twenty eighteen Safe Boots to School Design Systems. And like I said, this is just the partial payment, and it's payment number one for their design services that are associated with that, that grant that we received for the Safe Boots School. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-one is a resolution approving acquisition R two two zero one six six four for iWork Systems in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars for free making software. This software is going to be used in the PDW. They're going to use it to track details of work orders and allow them to more accurately budget and report. So, I mean, this is just sort of entering, you know, modern, modern era, being able to, to track things electronically and digitally. Will make things more efficient and work out with these facilities. And then finally, we have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two fifty-two, which is a resolution for the Borough of New Providence, County of Union, State of New Jersey, rejecting all bids for projects known as recycling collection and marketing. So, as we've spoken about in the past, this, this area is getting a little bit tighter and tighter as far as, as the players in the recycling companies. The current company that we use and have been using has notified us that they won't be rebidding their contract. So, we did go out there, we did receive one bid, it did not meet our specifications, so we will go out to rebid this. And like we have said in the past, you know, what we have seen from our neighboring communities is significant increases in the recycling field. So, like I said, they have a monopoly. We have to do recycling. There's a very small amount of companies that do, that do it. So, we are almost at their mercy. We will rebid and see what's up.
And if we don't get, if we don't get a bid or a bid we like, then we can negotiate?
Yeah. After the second bid.
Okay. Discussion items? Okay, committee reports. I spoke to the police today, and they said the drop-off on Pioneer Drive is doing well. I know it's going to be an adjustment, but just ask people to be patient. In fact, I think Chief Hen said that, Mr. Henry said the, the kids are all getting in school on time, which has been an amazing nuance, so. Yeah. But I know there's things that have been floating around, that Jones Drive is going to be one-way, and none of that is true. All the information, if you have a question, please contact the police department, the traffic division, and they will tell you exactly what's going on. Nothing will be sprung on anybody. So, besides that, I love it. Matt?
Thank you, sir. I, I, the only thing I have is just, just engineering and construction. I know our engineer met with the cricket club, they went out to Warner, and they literally marked off, you know, where they're going to put the pitch. And then our recreation, Bernard went out and took a look at it to make sure that it made sense as far as what their plans are with recreation. Everything looks great, and so we're moving forward on that project.
Good. Okay. Is that it? Okay, maybe.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to everyone, Hispanic Heritage Month will begin on Thursday. So, October fifteenth, or September fifteen through October fifteen. Brian, I will give you a copy of this flyer, so you can put it up with the video. There are many great things to look forward to this upcoming month. There is a K to twelve poster contest. There is a conversation throughout the month on social media with Latino community leaders. On this Friday, September sixteenth, from six to nine P M., there was an event called Fiesta Latina in the city of Summit on Village Green, which is a collaboration with the Summit Diversity Committee. There will be a showing of, and so then there's a series of library items, and this includes a showing of Encanto this upcoming Saturday from two to four. Hispanic Heritage Cultural Artifacts Display, Spanish Storytime, two of those, and then a World of Music presentation. And then culminating on October eighth, there will be a community heritage celebration held right outside a Centennial Park from two to three thirty with a variety of arts and crafts, typical dress parade. We will be announcing the poster contest winners. We'll have a zumba class, which I'm looking forward to. We will meet an author, and there will be tawwar music and other dancing programs. So, we will include both of these on, with the video. It's also located on the borough website, so I hope you can all come out and join us. It looks to be a great celebration, and I'd be like to thank the Diversity Committee for all their work and efforts on this. One other small item, the Mental Health Advocacy and Education Committee. We met a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was. So, we met with our larger group now that we have volunteers that have signed up for that committee. We met, we, it was kind of a get-to-know-you, give some ideas, brainstorming, and we look forward to working with them. Lot of great ideas, many concerned residents who want to bring advocacy and awareness about mental health to our community. So, that's it for me.
And just a reminder, if you're looking to join one of these committees, like the Mental Health Committee, to fill out the volunteer form online on the borough website.
Rob?
Just briefly, Councilman Kaminsky and I went to the Board of Health meeting last week. The only thing that really was discussed was, again, talking about the wonder trucks. We had been charging them for inspections and permits, but now the state has come out saying that we're no longer supposed to do that. It's going to be handled through Cranford, which is where their main commissary is out, and that their trucks are really considered more just like delivery trucks as opposed to, you know, a food truck. That's it.
Please say.
What I have is the Sustainability Committee. They met on the twenty-eighth, and they finalized some, oh, actually, the next meeting is the twentieth, so they met on the twenty-fourth, August twenty-fourth. They just finalized details for the Free Cycle Fest, which is this Saturday, from nine to two at the pool parking lot. And you can drop off items from nine to noon. Okay, so there, we don't, we're looking to kind of get the donations upfront earlier part of the day. The earlier you bring them, the better. You know, closer to that nine o'clock time this way, folks that come to browse will have an opportunity to, to take your items hopefully. So, what we're looking for here is, you know, clean working water items, things that you loved, that still work, that you just don't need anymore or don't want anymore, anything that you can carry in. So, nothing, you know, no gigantic pieces of furniture, no clothing, no books. And so, basically, we're just trying to keep everything out of the trash. So, if you don't have anything that you want to bring, if you come to browse, you might, you know, what do they say? One man's trash is another man's treasure, so hopefully you'll find something you love. Another thing that we will be doing at the Free Cycle Fest this year, and this is new, is a plant and seed exchange, and that's going to go from nine to noon. And what we're looking at here is just swapping seeds and cuttings. And we're asking that those seeds and cuttings be already portioned, okay? And clearly labeled with as much information as possible. That includes like the name of your seeds or cutting, the botanical name, tips for growing, and any additional notes that you might have, you know, to share. Let's just see everybody there. There's a rain date, but I think it's going to be beautiful out, so we're going to need it.
It is, it's supposed to be really nice this weekend. Bye again.
I have two. So, the Historical Society is having their book festival on Saturday, the seventeenth. I believe it's from nine until, I think it's two. And it is at the Salt Box Museum. They have a website, www.newprovidencebookfestival.com. Also, if you find it in your heart, don't forget to join the New Providence Historical Society and go to their website in case you, for further information. Board of Education, there's lots going on in the schools. All the schools began on September first, which I think was the first time. Activities are on full swing. There's a lot of back-to-school nights this week and next week. And the biggest news is that there is a bond referendum. The resolution was approved at the August thirtieth Board of Ed meeting, and we will have Board of Ed representatives to present at upcoming school and community events. We actually had people at the PTSA meeting on Monday night, and that was amazing. So, PTA, PTO meetings, back-to-school nights, they will actually, we will have representatives on September twenty-seventh, which is a Tuesday, at our next Borough Council meeting. They will be at the NPF, NPEF Fall Festival, special presentations at the DeCorso Center in Lantern Hill. So, there will be a lot of presentations, a lot of opportunities to ask questions. Please feel free to ask any questions to the Board of Ed themselves. There is actually a dedicated page on the website, www.npsd.k twelve nj.us, or just search it. And I think that's everything. The next Board of Ed meeting is September twenty-ninth, but look for, at their website for more information. That's it.
Okay, two things I forgot. The bridge, the college street. They put the pylons in, and I was down there, there are huge steel beams. I mean, this thing, I think, is constructed better than the George Washington Bridge. But at any rate, they're working on it. They were digging today. I think they're building for, for the forms, for the concrete, and they couldn't, I don't think they could afford because of the weather. And we're sure today. Also, Saturday, ten o'clock, we have a ribbon cutting at the new bakehouse. So, and the following Sunday, twelve o'clock, may as it will be, Father Francisco's getting, I guess, sworn in as pastor, but we're all about it today, so. And that's all I have. Bernard, anything?
Overall, operations are normal. We're finishing up a lot of our capital projects for the years. We're getting into leaf season. Leaf, leaf permits are now on sale on the borough website, although we won't start collecting for a few weeks. You can get your permit now.
Okay, great. Okay. Opportunity for the public, anybody wishing to, if it's canceled, please raise, yeah, Alan?
I just have a question.
Sure.
On the ordinance, twenty-two dash fourteen, I tried to look it up today. It comes up as page not found. I, I've tried every computer, every apparatus that I have in the house.
Well, it'll be up tomorrow, not too after this.
Okay. That's really the only thing.
Okay, that works. Anyone else? Yeah, Jeff?
Hi, Mr. Warren.
Yeah.
I'm here tonight to find some comments on the introduction of ordinance, uh, uh, twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two fourteen, the chapter three-ten code zoning ordinance. I asked this evening that you provide separate discussion, uh, for that not as a considered item. And first of all, I have to apologize for not giving you comment on the downtown master plan back in twenty-sixteen when it was first introduced. That was my neglect, and I apologize for that. I should have been paying more attention. But, uh, since then, I've read the, uh, plan in its entirety, and I've examined it in detail, and I think there are some flaws in it uh, that really need to be reconsidered while it's still in draft form and not adopted as an ordinance or as a resolution and changed to the sort of ordinances that you can still modify because it's not considered law yet. Some of the recommendations that I've read in there are going to inevitably alter the character of the borough, maybe not improving it to what makes the Borough more specialized, you know, today. Some of you know me. I don't know if you do, but I'll just give you a quick overview of who I am. Lived here since nineteen fifty-six. I've got a degree in landscape architecture with a focus and emphasis on urban planning and design. I'm the vice chairman of the zoning board for a bunch of years, and I was appointed by you recently to the Historic Commission. And I also serve as a default pro bono landscape architect for the borough. Uh, done, uh, worked on the Recreation and Open Space Master Plan, I designed Centennial Park. I designed the music area of Vickers Park and the master plan with that, uh, that's my plan. Uh, I did those li- uh, landscape plans for the library. Uh, I did the corner of the streetscape over by the Presbyterian Church. I did the deck design for the seniors, uh, last year, and I'm working with, uh, Ralph on the tree planting for this year. So, you know, I'm really, uh, I'm one, because I've lived here, it's important to me, and I think it's, uh, I'm bringing these things up to you for your consideration. I think you need to consider one more time how some of the recommendations included in the downtown master plan are gonna alter our town and maybe kill the golden goose of why people choose to live here. I'll tell you how. I've heard countless times from being on the zoning board elsewhere, people say, when people choose Reprovidence to live in, they specifically cite the small-town character and feel and the ambiance that the downtown area has, it's a major selling point to the town. And we want that because it brings families and folks to town, and they're attracted specifically, one of the things for the way that we have our downtown. So my concern this evening is a matter of scale, and I'll tell you how that run me. In the master plan, they had short-term and long-term recommendations in the master plan, some of them including parking strategies. Well, duh, you know, we know that that's a real pain. Connectivity and circulation, which can always be improved. We want people to walk more, and I've tried from the back of that store to the back of that store. Uh, streetscape, it can always be improved. Um, the zoning and parking regulations do need another look at and update, and we think that that's important. Zoning and mixed use is important to be addressed and considered. The urban design standards are always important, I agree with that, and marketing and promotions, these were all short-term and long-term, midterm exclusives. But some of the things that I think you ought to pay attention to, and that's why I'm here tonight, is that there is a part of it called opportunity sites, and that needs a relooking. I'll tell you why. One of the things that particularly troubles me and why it came this evening is because there's now, uh, an application for, um, allowing three-story buildings in the downtown area. And if you want to know what a three-story building looks like, go over to Berkeley Heights and take a look at what now, at where the movie theater used to be. That is what you'll possibly have, uh, lining the streets of, uh, our town. Right now, there are no three-story buildings in town other than this one and Senior Center. And you can imagine, in the opportunity sites portion of the plan, one of the spots that they have is right where the, uh, Commons Barber Shop is and, and there. If you imagine a three-story building right there, which is close to the corner of South and Springfield, that will be looming. And right around downtown, again, with the eye looking at scale, right? I strongly suggest that you take a look at scale of our downtown, of what makes it attractive as a downtown area and why people come here. And that's one of the things that brings me this evening. The last time the master plan was, uh, reexamined was twenty oh-nine, and one of the things that they said, they could preserve an increase in economic and aesthetic vitality of the existing commercial district. And I agree with that. I think we all do. We want to make sure this is a good-looking place. And it goes back to my concern for the inclusion of the provision in the master plan for three-story buildings as a matter of scale. If that becomes part of the ordinance, then you've just opened Pandora's box to changing and altering fundamentally and forever the scale of downtown. And I, I want you to reconsider and, um, and, and before you make the two oh-two-two dash whatever that is, uh, permanent law, that you consider that again, and, you know, you have the opportunity to go back and ask higher goals and, wait a second, let's think about this in a minute. Because scale of downtown, there's some of the things that attract people to Reprovidence, and it's gotta be different than Berkeley Heights and different than some of this whole part of the area.
Good point. This is only introduction.
I understand.
So what I would, uh, we have to introduce it.
Okay.
But the final isn't till, I think we have to wait a month, right?
A couple of weeks from now, two years.
At any rate, my suggestion is you talk to Keith all the time. Talk to Keith about it, and McKinley, the planner. This has to go back to the planning board. So, you know. And then, uh, and then it'll come back to us, so.
Okay, I want, I want them.
Yeah, no, but I understand what you're saying.
And so you know it, and I will definitely talk to Keith, and I'll talk to, um, McKinley as well, or, you know, I know well.
Right.
And, uh, but when I, when Margaret made, uh, this note to me that this is gonna come on tonight's agenda and why, um, this is now how it's gonna proceed, I, I reread again the master plan from beginning to end, and certain things in there are a bit troubling, and I can talk to McKinley about it. But having the opportunity to revisit some of those things one more time before it's adopted into, uh, uh, gorgeous law, I think is worth your consideration, and that's why I came to see you.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it so much, thanks.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address council?
Take a bag.
Yes, please.
Take a bag. Everybody take a bag.
I'll take two.
See, I want to declare these public comments closed.
I'm gonna recuse myself, Mayor, from, um, twenty-twenty-two fourteen, no, twenty-twenty-two. It's still the introduction, though, right?
So.
It's, we're not voting on that. No, no, from twenty-twenty-two dash twelve. For the multi fam, I, I own multi families, so. I'm choosing myself on that one.
Well, that's just a state law. You don't have a choice. And it makes no sense, so, okay.
And it's still the, it's still the introduction, right?
We have to do it anyway.
That's just the introduction.
Okay, uh, I need a motion for one to twenty-five, please. So moved.
Second.
Rock call, please.
Hi.
This is Joffrey.
Yes.
This is Louie, yes.
Yes.
This is Big Night.
Yes.
This is Bolisca.
I.
Okay, uh, they have to go into, uh, executive session, uh, resolution for ready to be declared.
Resolution establishing September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two is the date, and eight-thirty P M is the time, and the municipal center is the place for the holding of a special session of the mayor and council of the Borough of New Providence to discuss personnel matters, uh, involving the administrator, at which time the public will be excluded.
Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Rock call, please.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
This is Joffrey.
Yes.
This is Louie, yes.
Yes.
This is Big Night.
Yes.
This is Bolisca.
I.
Okay, we'll, uh, adjourn for, uh, five minutes.
Yeah, I'm not.
Remember, hello?
I'm not.